Welcome, everybody. This is Binghamton City Council Business Meeting. Today is Wednesday, July 2nd. I called the meeting to order at 6:05. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Edible clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Maria is absent. Councilmember Middleton present. Councilmember Kavanaugh is absent. Councilmember Hotchkiss? Councilmember Medvedevsky present. Councilmember Rathman present. Council President Dundon.
Present.
Thank you.
So we need to approve the last business meeting minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the last business meeting minutes?
Motion.
And a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
So we have an appointment that needs to be named, and I will hand this over to Councilmember Hotchkiss.
So I'm going to appoint Justula Santos to the District Four seat on CDAC. She's come really highly recommended and is eager to be engaged and involved in that whole process.
And she's from my district.
Seeing that we have no other committees to report from our appointments, we do not have to set any public hearings. We'll move on to tonight's public hearing. This public hearing is regarding RL 25-108. It's a resolution authorizing FY 51 Annual Action Plan and 2025 Five-Year Consolidated Plan. Residents wishing to participate in public hearings may do so electronically by emailing their comments prior to 1:00 PM on the day of the meeting to clerk@cityofbinghampton.gov or in person during the meeting. Anybody who wishes to speak during this public hearing, please come down now and speak at this time. Eileen, this is for the public hearing on the CDBG funding, not public comment yet. Please state your name and if you live or work in the city of Binghamton.
Outstanding. My name is Moses Perry. I'm the commander of American Legion Post 80. Just newly appointed here as of May 2nd. I lived here in Binghamton all my life, well, since I was a teenager. And yeah, pretty much I'm here today to talk a little bit about the organization I'm a part of, which is like I said, the American Legion Post 80, and I do appreciate you guys having a little sitter to talk about it. American 80 is a historical building. It's been here since about over 100 years now. And we're in trouble. And the biggest thing of it is, as I said before, to many, many other people, the American Legion is a historical building. In most cases, located in a pretty disadvantaged kind of neighborhood. And we're struggling. You're gonna hear that word a lot from me today because it is definitely a fact. It's a struggling historical building, and it needs help. And this is why we're here today. One of the areas that we're looking at now is replacing our roof. Our roof right now is in desperate, desperate trouble. Leaking in my main hall. If anyone of you guys has ever been to my main hall, it's a good sized, beautiful hall, beautiful building. But because of the roof and dangers of the roof, it's leaking. And other areas that we have in the building is also doing the same thing, leaking. And we, like I said, we're a new team. And we have so many different changes that we're looking at here. Putting the right people in the right place. I think we've done that. We've done a really good job on reestablishing how we're gonna deal with the policies of Post 80, making sure we're on the right track and everything is going in the right way. So that if things happen in the right way, we'll be able to deal with it. The right way means that whatever the benefit that we allow or we do get, it will go to the right places. The right places mean to take care of this historical building, American Legion Post 80, 76 Main Street. That's where our heart and soul is. In the last two months, we've sat down and we've decided, and we've said, how are we gonna fix this problem? And replacing the roof. And we've tried, and we've looked at other areas. And guys, we need help. We definitely need help. We've looked at some other places, outreach places that can kind of benefit us, help us also. We've looked at the Tiger Dallas Foundation and stuff like that. We've reached out to them, touched up, and see what we can do with those guys. Last year, before I moved in, I found, ran across some paperwork where Leah Webb, an organization, was willing to to actually give us some help there, consider giving us some help there, which is a blessing if that can happen. Nothing's locked in the concrete yet, but if these are just areas and people that I think that we could actually work with, they can work with us, excuse me, let me rephrase that, to basically get us where we need to do, and that's keeping this old building afloat and above water. Target goal, basically, is to pretty much focus on taking care of the community, focus on taking care of the veterans here. We do a lot of different things in the building that a lot of people look, take it for granted, and they don't realize the way we deal with people coming off. We have veterans all the time coming in and saying, what can you do to help me? I need this. I need that. And this is what we do. This is what the American Legion does. And what we've done is, what's gonna happen if that building goes? It's gonna be a lot of areas where we cannot be able to support the community in the way it needs to be supported. Right now, we're looking at serving at least 25,000 people in the local community, for whatever reasons may be. Some of them come in looking for homes, which we actually, not homes, but places to live. And which we actually guide them in the direction that they need to go. We got the other different veterans programs within the community, but we make sure we lead them in the right direction.
You have about 45 seconds left.
I'm sorry. Okay. Like I said, if we can get help right now and basically get a focus on what we need to get done, I think, and I really, really feel that we can keep this old building around for another 100 years. But definitely, definitely. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Captain Joseph Hanson, Salvation Army here in Binghamton. I am a resident of Vestal, but I work in Binghamton since 2019, and we serve all of Broom County. I'm just here today to support the American Legion Post 80 and their request for their funding. Basically, because without Post 80, we would be just as struggling as he has been, as that post is. When we had a certain incident in our facility, forcing us outside of our facility, Post 80 acted immediately and allowed us to utilize their property in order to continue to serve the homeless and the underprivileged that we normally do serve. And it's because of their effort to keep us in service that we are literally able to give out thousands of meals. And hundreds of families are being affected, and we are able to fight the food insecurity that has been the bedstone of our mission here in Broom County. So it is because of their support and that we are here to support them and their request for this funding.
Right at this time, we're gonna go to a two-part, three-part session, if you don't mind. I want to turn it over to one of my people that work with me here, and they're gonna talk a little bit more about the logistics of it, if that's okay with you guys. So, please.
Hello, my name is Paul Castione. I work and am part of the American Legion Post 80 in Binghamton, 76 Main Street. I've been a member of the post since October of this year. I was raised in Endicott, New York, and I raised my family in the Boston area. I've been back in this area caring for elderly folks for about the last 18 months. I've, in recent, I was in the Air Force, and I was surprised when I got out of the Air Force to find that my college buddies didn't share the same values that I had. Values of service to others, values of making the world a better place, values of being considerate and look out for my fellow man. They were focused on a new car, a new house, and their individual careers. And there's nothing wrong with that, but I felt a bit alone in seeking a way to be helpful. So in recent years, I've tried lots of different things. I started a dinner club in Boston and in Silicon Valley. I've worked for nonprofits, all with this idea of trying to find a place to be helpful. And I founded here in Binghamton at the had been discussed through the CDAC group, be allocated towards Post 80 so that we can continue our mission. And I'll just add one last thing. The mission is at risk. If we do not get a new roof, not only is the building at risk, but the ability for Post 80 as an American Legion in downtown Binghamton is also at risk. So I ask that you take that to heart. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Right here. So it's both the, I know the structure is, it's got like the mansion in the front and then like the block building. It's both the rubber, like, flat roof and the shingles on the mansion that both need to replace? Is there a higher priority, like one or the other, or both of them?
Good question. So yes, both need to be replaced. The roofs were replaced in the 1990s. Can give more information, but the roof was replaced in the early 90s, so both need to be replaced. But from a priority perspective, we've asked, you know, the various folks who have looked at the roof, the priority is main hall. Can do, we've looked into pricing for you know, or first, and then prioritize the other roof second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else come down to speak for the public hearing? I will say, if you guys are done speaking, we normally use those chairs to keep the line going. So if you guys could go up into the audience, that'd be appreciated. Thank you. Hi, please state your name and if you live or work in the city of Binghamton.
My name is Jennifer Corby. I live and work in the city of Binghamton. I'm a proud resident of the West Side, and I'm the Executive Director of the Phelps Mansion Museum in downtown Binghamton. And I just want to say thank you so much to all of you for being considered for this. This is my first time doing this. I wasn't aware that we had time to speak. So how much time is there to speak? Five minutes? Okay. I have a letter that I sent out to you guys, but I will read it unless you prefer me not to read it. Okay, terrific. This is Dear Mayor Cram and City Council. The Phelps Mansion Museum is a vital cultural and historical institution located in downtown Binghamton that serves a diverse cross-section of our community while also drawing a significant amount of out-of-town tourists. The PMM is celebrating its 20th anniversary as an organization this year, and it continues to broaden its audience and local impact by engaging with our community's art, education, and history groups. Many of our events take place in our historic 1905 ballroom, which after many years of small repairs, is now in need of a full replacement. The trolley tours for First Friday are a collaboration with the Broom County Arts Council, the Binghamton Economic Development Council, and the City of Binghamton. These tours allow participants to explore Binghamton's art and architecture and architecture. Our ongoing partnership with BCAC also includes sculpture walking tours of downtown, bringing Santa to the downtown arts district. The PMM is also a proud participant in the Broom Arts Trail for 2025, a weekend event showcasing local visual and musical artists run through the Broom County Arts Council. Through its partnership with the Binghamton Philharmonic, the Phelps Mansion Museum series brings four intimate chamber concerts per season to the PMM, featuring young, diverse, world-class musicians, offering a unique opportunity for the community to engage with classical music in a beautiful setting. Because the Philharmonic's programming often features composers and musicians from underrepresented backgrounds, the concerts help to expand the PMM's commitment to serving the entire community. The PMM also collaborated with the Binghamton Baseball Booster Club for a day of baseball for the second year in a row this past February. This year's version was Tip of the Cap to the Negro Leagues and Bud Fowler, a presentation by the National Baseball Hall of Fame and guest speaker Dave Stewart. In 2023, 2024, the PMM partnered with the Harriet Tubman Center for Freedom and Equity at Binghamton University to research Andrew Jackson, a Civil War, a black Civil War veteran who lived and worked at the Phelps Mansion in the late 1800s. The PMM is now proudly designated as Number Nine on the Downtown Freedom Trail, which opened in March of 2025, with a sign honoring Jackson's contribution and educating the public about vital roles black veterans played in the Civil War. The ballroom is an important community space as well for rentals, which hadn't happened since 2005. Many local businesses and nonprofit organizations now rent the space, making the roof repair essential. The PMM is dedicated to creating opportunities for community participation and removing barriers to access. We offer First Friday events, which are free. Museums for All Program, which is, we are a proud member, offering free admission to individuals who qualify through SNAP and EBT. We are also members of Blue Star Museums, which is a collaboration with the National Endowment on the Arts, the Blue Star Families, and the Department of Defense. Excuse me, and participating museums across America, which offers free admission to currently serving military personnel and their families. The PMM has consistently been ranked number one on TripAdvisor for almost 10 years as the top attraction in Binghamton.
You have about 45 seconds.
Thank you. Our guided tours are a significant draw for visitors from out of town, directly driving tourism to Binghamton. The Board of Directors and the Executive Director are highly enthusiastic about the city's investment in the Stadium District. And we host 80% of these events in our ballroom, and keeping our roof in good repair not only ensures that we preserve an important historic building, but allows us to continue drawing quality performers, tourists, and community members to the Stadium District. There we go. We're grateful to be here. Thank you so much. Sorry, that was a bit of a reading thing. I got wound up from falling up there in the seats.
Perfectly all right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is that it?
I guess, and you are out of time. Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Please state your name and if you live or work in the city of Binghamton.
I'm Jesse Stonehee. I do not live in the city or work in the city. So I do think I'm still allowed to say something, right? Okay. I don't know. Sometimes the way the systems work confused me a little, so I wanted to make sure I was here, and if I had the opportunity to speak, I would. So I'd like to start out by thanking the city for historically allocating significant support to our, what's called High CAP program, which is basically Medicare counseling. I work in human services where everything is an acronym, but Medicare counseling makes sense to most people who
Do you mind staying? I don't, maybe I missed it, but which agency are you? I mean, I know that I just need people to know where you're from.
You asked me the right question. Sorry, I bypassed that. I'm the Director of Action for Older Persons. So we do the Medicare counseling. Thank you for asking me that question. I appreciate it. So we serve about 2,500 individuals every year. We save those individuals that come to us for counseling over $3 million. That's money that goes back into people's pockets, many of which are living on extremely limited incomes. That means they can have some of the other things they need in life, safe housing, food, medications. The reality is, when people don't have appropriate healthcare, they end up sick, they end up dying. I mean, this is a really meaningful and important thing, and I think everyone knows this is an interesting environment we're living in, in terms of healthcare. The federal government has never really addressed how complicated Medicare is. They've just put tiny amounts of money into state agencies. We're a unique community because our Office for Aging subcontracts with us. We have a volunteer crew of about 20 individuals. We serve far more individuals in a community than almost anywhere else in the state because of those volunteers. So the support, though, to do that is absolutely vital from the city. In fact, the mayor reached out to me when there were the announcements that this funding could be cut and asked me if we could speak to that. So I did have the opportunity to speak to the paper because this has been a huge commitment over time to support this program. It almost got cut out in the skinny budget. It was completely eliminated. And I don't know, as I speak here, I say thank you. I don't know how the city is thinking as I'm here about what happens if less funding comes to this community, because I think everyone's aware, or I hope, that the dollars federally in the president's proposed budget are a third for this. So I don't know if that's been something that the city has been considering, so I come here asking if there's an update on that.
I just had a quick question. I know that you serve us all of Broom County. What percentage do you serve to Binghamton residents?
A third. A third or City of Binghamton, yeah.
And if you were to receive funding, will Binghamton residents be, or do you receive it from other municipalities?
Yeah, we, well, we have diverse funding, so we get it from the City of Binghamton, because I know that's a question that we always get asked. We do not rely just on City of Binghamton funding. Our largest funder is actually United Way. And then it's, we also have funding from the Office for Aging, and we also have money from Town of Union. So periodically, when we've had some funding cuts, we've also gotten it from local foundations.
And you haven't reached out to other, like Vestal or any other, because you said all of Broom County you service, correct?
Or? Yes, we serve, we just serve Broom County.
Okay.
In other counties, there's
Well, just other, like Vestal, like, yeah, just other different municipalities and towns?
No.
Oh, okay. Have you ever reached out to any of those?
As of now, we've been sufficient, every dollar of funding that goes through this goes directly to support our staff that work it. We have less than one and a half staff members and a crew of 20 volunteers. I would need to fundraise significantly more to actually cover additional staffing. So at this point, we've stretched the dollars as much as we can. I'm not in a position to, it wouldn't make sense for us to fundraise unless we could fundraise additionally and go out for additional support, unless we are able to get in significantly more dollars.
No, but I'm not saying fundraise. Oh, go ahead. Were you saying something?
I think I'll clarify too. So Town of Union and City of Binghamton are the only participating jurisdictions that receive HUD entitlement funding.
Correct.
And so the broad countywide municipal ask wouldn't necessarily be relevant to the funding opportunity that Town of Union and City of Binghamton can provide.
Okay. I was gonna say, I wasn't aware of other funding pots that would specifically qualify for Vestal, separate from Town of Union funding.
Anybody else have a comment? Because I'm pretty sure the five minutes is up. Thank you so much. Anyone else want to come down to speak for the public hearing? Seeing no one else wants to speak for the public hearing, we will close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
The motion.
And a second?
Anything submitted by email? Okay, motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, public hearing is closed. Moving on to public comment. Residents wishing to submit public comment may do so electronically by emailing their comments prior to 1:00 PM on the day of the meeting to clerk@cityofbinghampton.gov or come down in person during the meeting. Elaine, it's good to see you.
Hi, it's good to see you too. I live in the city of Binghamton. And the topic I'm gonna discuss tonight is I'm all for getting help out to people to take care of our war vets or have other community issues to take care of, regardless of where they live at. Let's try to get that out there, the help for them. If HUD can't do it, maybe HUD knows an agency that can help them get the care they need. You know, you can always talk to Catholic Charities Supportive Housing. They might know of agencies that can help our American Legion or other agencies. You know, that's why it's important to speak to Mr. Benjamin or Catholic Charities Supportive Housing around Front Street next to StepStone, because he might know of an agency that can help other agencies, even if they're out of town, as long as it's in Broom County, you know? So, and on to the other topic that I'm gonna be focused on is the medical care. I'm just hoping that seven Republicans hold their own in the House and say no to that awful bill. That awful bill will cut out Medicaid, SNAP, and WIC. Those were created for young people with children on their hands. WIC for pregnant women or babies after they're born, their first year of life after they're born. SNAP was created for children and parents or children and caregivers. Sometimes it's caregivers who raise the children because the parents don't want them or something happened to the parents. So that's why I'm on the side of the Medicaid. And Medicare I'm on the side of because it does help the disabled. You never know when somebody can be born with something so severe that they need the help, not just Medicare, but Medicaid. Medicare covers more. I was born with seizures to no fault of my own. I started dying because they didn't have health insurance back then. But thanks to Lyndon B. Johnson signing that into law, I got Medicare and Medicaid, and they straightened me out with the right medicines. Okay, so I do approve of Medicare or Medicaid because sometimes that's what's needed. When people are born with either epilepsy or something else, soothsberg, or even organ, maybe they're in need of an organ transplant. We can't deny people the care that they need, whether it's organ transplant, seizures, or anything else, or cancer, you know? It just goes livid that they even think about doing away with Medicare or Medicaid and SNAP and WIC. That makes me go livid. And now they're going around turning down housing, now allowing sheltered housing for people? That's wrong. With that, I'm gonna close.
Thank you so much. How's it going, Randy? Is your light on? Because we're not hearing you through the system.
Yep, my name is Randy. I live in the city of Binghamton. Well, it's not just here. There's like this huge blight, you know, of like a lot of buildings that are dilapidated throughout America, and it's like a housing crisis. And it's not just like about the legions or the war vets. It's like this total collapse that I was saying last, the last time I was here. There's like this collapse in like healthcare, food, and housing and all that stuff, straight across America. If you go to other states and other cities, you see it there too, because like, it's like this whole collapse. So I mean, what do you do, like, to make more housing for people? And it's kind of bad enough as it is that, you know, everybody wants to do away with the housing when there's already a housing crisis. And there's already a collapse in it. And there's already a collapse in the other parts of, you know, things in the world, like the food and healthcare and all that stuff. And it's kind of like bad enough as it is that, you know, they want to take away all these other things from people. And so, like I said, the last time I was here, it was like, there's this huge blight in like almost every city, every state, of like housing is like shot and everywhere a shot, you know? And it's like, these people come up here, and I'm not surprised because they're gonna ask for funding and all this other stuff, but like, they don't really talk about like all these other things, like the loss of housing, loss of, and food problems and medical problems. It's like, it's straight across America. You know, all these crises is going on. With that, I'll close.
Thank you so much, Randy. Next, please. Come on down. Please state your name and if you live or work in the city of Binghamton.
Miles Burnett, West Side resident. Good evening, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight, and thank you for continuing to hold the Cram administration accountable by referring the resolution to purchase the Binghamton Plaza for one and a half million dollars to the planning committee. That oversight is essential, because even after a series of statements and social media posts, we are no closer to understanding the mayor's actual plan about the Binghamton Plaza. The only thing that has been made clear is the lack of planning and vision behind the The only thing that has been made clear is the lack of planning and vision behind this proposal. According to legal documents, uh, on the city's website, the so-called plan to create a field, and I quote, "prepare the site for a yet undetermined productive use." Let's be clear, that is not a serious proposal. We do not need an empty field. We need answers. Because once the city owns this property, the real costs begin and they start immediately. The property will be taken off the tax rolls, hurting the city's bottom line at a time when every dollar counts. The city will assume the cost of maintenance, things like snow removal, which currently costs the plaza about $40,000 a year. And if anything happens on that property, whatever it is, vandalism, trespassing, or God forbid, an injury, liability will fall squarely on the city and its taxpayers. We also still don't know how much has already been spent in legal fees to pursue this acquisition or what legal costs may lie ahead. The public deserves that number. And let's not forget, this is a contaminated brownfield site. City documents show that more than 600,000 tons of toxic material may have to be excavated, removed and replaced, a process that could involve years of demolition and remediation with truckloads of hazardous materials traveling through our residential neighborhoods. We haven't even begun to hear how this will affect the health and safety of nearby residents, especially children and seniors who live close to the site. And we still have no answer to the basic questions. How long will this take? Will it take two years? Will it take 20 years? We don't know how much it will cost. Will it cost $5 million or $50 million? Are the city's buildings, are these buildings even able to be demolished without triggering a deeper, more costly cleanup? And what, if anything, will even be allowed to be built there when all is said and done? The only thing that is clear is that this will be a long, expensive and uncertain road. And before the mayor levels the plaza, he needs to level with the public. My fear, and I think many of you share it, is that we're heading toward the same dead end we've seen elsewhere in Broom County. The Endicott Plaza comes to mind, which currently sits vacant for years due to remediation costs. The old BAE system site in Westover is now just a giant fenced off field. Neither outcome is acceptable for the Binghamton Plaza or the North Side. There's no doubt that this site has been mismanaged and neglected, but the choice is not binary. It's not either we let the current owner continue to fail the community or the city spends millions it doesn't have with no plan in place. There are other paths forward, but they require real planning, honest communication and clear leadership. This is not the first time residents have seen the administration's lack of vision and strategy in action. In recent years, the city took over numerous properties only to let them sit vacant, deteriorating and becoming more unsafe every day. That's what happened over at the Fayette Street apartment buildings. The city took them over just to let them decay until demolition was the only option. Now Jared Cram wants to add this huge property at the Binghamton Plaza to the city's portfolio. He can't even keep a few houses on Fayette Street properly secured. What sort of mismanagement can we expect here? This is shaping up to be one of the most expensive projects in Binghamton's history and the taxpayers still have no idea what they're paying for.
About 45 seconds.
While millions of are funneled toward the plaza, residents across the city suffer from a lack of affordable housing, from crumbling infrastructure and from limited economic opportunity. Young people are leaving to build their futures elsewhere. This isn't leadership, it's reckless spending on misplaced priorities. Our community deserves better. That's why I stood with the North Side residents and small business owners earlier this week and why I continue to ask the same question. What is the plan for Binghamton Plaza? Because without a plan, there is no accountability and without accountability, the public will be left holding the bag. I have faith in the council to get the answers that people deserve. And if the mayor has a real plan with estimates from contractors and approvals from the state, he should present it. And if he doesn't, he has an obligation to admit that. Because once we take this on, it becomes our responsibility, our burden. Before we take that step, we need to know exactly what we're getting into. Thank you.
Mr. Brown, it's good to see you. I'm still going to have you state your name and if you ever work in the city.
Uh, Kenny Brown. I live on the west side of Binghamton. I guess I'll start off since Miles, uh, went with that, the North Side, uh, Kmart building. I, uh, I know it's a huge environmental cleanup. I know it's a brown site. I know we don't really know what the cost of it is to clean it up, but I think research into it would be good if we do tear the building down because in my opinion, it's a huge, huge undertaking, expensive, but you spend money on the front end of a housing crisis. You don't have to spend money on the back end. And in my opinion, I would like to see the lot, if possible, to clean up, clean it up. Turn half of it into tiny home community for the homeless that brings people off the streets. The other half, like I said, if the environmental cleanup allows raised bed greenhouses, maybe in conjunction with vines, employ the homeless, the no longer homeless in the vines, gardens, sell the produce at Greater Good Grocery across the street, farmers markets. This is all very, not fleshed out plans, but it's, uh, just an idea out there. It could battle a few of the issues we see in the city. So yeah, that's, that's the idea for that one. I put that out there a few times, I think, but that's the first time I think I've said it at public comment. But, um, speaking of that area, also, uh, on 4th of July in Sherry Lindsey Park, me and a few community members are going to be doing a free grocery giveaway. Um, it's just show up from 1:00 to 3:00. Sherry Lindsey on the North Side will have food, no ID required, nothing, just come with a bag and get some food. Cause we know, uh, with a long weekend and the hot, the way the holiday falls, there might not be as many options. But yeah, that's 1:00 to 3:00 at, uh, Sherry Lindsey. If, um, you know, any of the council members want to share the flyer on their social media, we'd appreciate that just to get the word out there because, you know, some of you, it's your district, other of you, you know, you're just, that's the demographic you aim towards sometimes. Um, and last, I think that was about it today. I know normally I'm a little mouthier, but I'm more angry at other politicians and not you guys right now. So there we go. And you don't want to hear about that. You can just read my Facebook posts. All right, Free Palestine.
Good evening. Please state your name and if you live or work in the city of Binghamton.
Good evening. Hajra Aziz and I work in the city of Binghamton. I didn't have any intention on speaking, but, um, since we are discussing this potential huge undertaking for Binghamton Plaza, a place I can recall shopping for things for my now 30-year-old child, um, you know, and the park and just kind of the purpose of, of the area and the meaning to the community. I just want to implore as the city develops their plan in regard to what will take place with it, that there's, um, a concerted effort to truly consider permanent affordable housing as part of the remedy. And I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else like to come down and speak for public comment? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, did anybody send in any? Nope, we'll be moving on. We have no mayoral veto to review, so we're moving on to first red legislation. This is introductory ordinance O-25-44. It's considered in finance and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Rathmo.
Thank you, President Dundon. I'd like to motion to adopt introductory ordinance O-25-44, an ordinance to amend the 2025 Binghamton Johnson City Joint Sewage Treatment Budget to increase vehicle repair and decrease contingency.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second discussion.
Uh, for context, this, these are necessary relatively routine, uh, repairs as they were presented, where funding needs to be transferred from one budget line item to another simply to cover those necessary repairs.
Anyone else? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmo?
Aye.
Councilmember Medavetzky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh is absent. Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray is absent. Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you, that is 5-0.
We're going to move on to introductory ordinance O-25-46, considered in employees, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Medavetzky.
Like to make a motion for introductory ordinance O-25-46, an ordinance to amend the title of water slash sewer treatment plant operator to the title of water slash sewer systems treatment plant operator trainee.
We have a, a motion and a second discussion.
So it's, the title actually explains it all. It's looking to change the, the title of an existing position because the people that will be applying won't be able to come in, uh, except at the trainee level. So it's just to have that path and then they will ideally move out of that trainee position back into the plant operator, but they have to start as a trainee. So it's just to fill the position.
Anyone else? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmo?
Aye.
Councilmember Medavetzky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh is absent. Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray is absent. Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you, that is 5-0.
Next is introductory resolution R-25-37, considered in public works, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Make a motion to adopt introductory resolution R-25-37. This is a resolution to authorize supplemental agreement number two with EDR for the terminal pumping system.
I'll second.
Motion and a second discussion, please.
This resolution is just an update to the agreement with the folks that are already doing the work on the, the TPS system to, um, allow them to continue to do more work and move that project forward.
Anyone else? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmo?
Aye.
Councilmember Medavetzky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh is absent. Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray is absent. Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you, that is 5-0.
Next is introductory resolution R-25-39, considered in public works. I'll hand it over to Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Make a motion to adopt introductory resolution R-25-39. Uh, this is a resolution to authorize an agreement with New York State Department of Transportation for lighting on Route 434 slash 363 connector project.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second discussion.
So this, uh, resolution is going to allow the Department of Transportation to install new lighting fixtures on different parts of Route 363 and 434, um, as part of a much larger project, um, connector project. I was going through and looking at the different concepts that they have for that project. And I think it would be prudent for all of us to be more aware of the big changes that they're looking at, so. But in terms of lighting, uh, the state is putting up $3 million to install everything and, uh, between state and federal government. Um, and I think we're on the hook for a little over $700,000 over the course of 25 years in expected maintenance and energy costs.
Anyone else? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmo?
Aye.
Councilmember Medavetzky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh is absent.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Murray is absent. Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you, that is 5-0.
Next is introductory resolution R-25-40, considered in public works, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Make a motion to adopt introductory resolution R-25-40. This is a resolution authorizing, resolution to authorize an agreement with the New York State Department of Transportation for camera relocation on 434, uh, 363 connector project.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
Uh, this, uh, similar to the last one, as we're just allowing the Department of Transportation to install, um, cameras along that, uh, new project.
Anyone else? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmo?
Aye.
Councilmember Medavetzky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh is absent. Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Murray is absent. Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you, that is 5-0.
Next is introductory resolution R-25-41, considered an MPA, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, President Dundon. I'd like to make a motion for introductory resolution R-25-41, a resolution to authorize free parking on Saturdays in July.
Seeing I want to join in on the action, I'll second this one, discussion.
So, uh, basically, um, this, this, this is a resolution, um, uh, regarding free parking in the summer months. Uh, this is an initiative to bring more people to shop in downtown shops, um, downtown businesses. So yeah, that's, that's what this is, just basically the resolution for free parking. You were going to say something? Uh, I, I have.
Just to be clear, but it's not months, it's just July.
I said, I did say that.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And it's side street, right? Not.
It's both. It's both the parking garages and on street.
Yeah, it's downtown.
Okay, cool, thank you.
On Saturdays. Mm-hmm.
This got confusing for anybody at home. It's the four Saturdays in July, which is July 5th, 12th, 19th and 26th, and it's for all municipal ramps and metered parking in downtown.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have anything they want to discuss on this?
Hopefully people come and shop downtown.
Hopefully, I mean, it's free parking, why wouldn't you? So.
No.
Hearing nothing else, can we do a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Rathmo?
Aye.
Councilmember Medavetzky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh is absent.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Murray is absent. Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you, that is 5-0.
So we're going to move on to communication from council and I'll start with Councilmember Middleton since she's sitting all by herself.
Thank you, President Dundon. I, um, I actually wasn't going to say anything, but then I thought about it being 4th of July and how, um, just looking at national news, it is very depressing with 4th of July coming, but I am happy to be a part of a council that continues, continues to advocate for the most vulnerable population, the most vulnerable people, um, and things that are needed in the city of Binghamton, even if they're not doing it on the federal level, we here, um, are working and advocating for people who need it the most. So that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Middleton. Councilmember Rathmo?
No communications this evening.
Councilmember Medavetzky?
All right. Um, next traffic board meeting is July 10th, uh, at 9:15 AM right here in council chambers. Um, I think if you submit by tomorrow morning, you might still be able to get on that agenda. So that's kind of a general information. If you need to get something on the traffic board agenda, they usually say about a week, um, and you might be able to get on for the next week, uh, next meeting. Uh, events in South Side, uh, G- July 12th, there's the Sunday Safari, um, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at the zoo and it's free for members this year. In the past, it hasn't been. So if you're a member, it's free, but you do have to register for a ticket. Um, a number of organizations will be, uh, making themed ice cream sundaes. Achieve, uh, Fairview Recovery Services, Faith in Action Volunteers, Mother and Babies Perinatal Network, Phelps Mansion Museum, Roberson Museum and Science Center and Southern Tier Independence Center. So I'm, uh, excited to see the ice cream sundaes that they will be, uh, developing. So, uh, that is July 12th, but it usually sells out, so throw that out there. Okay, July 13th is the South Side Second Sundays, technically in District 6. Uh, the two bands that are going to be playing are Sheed Tree Mechanics and Torn and Freight, and it starts at 2:00 PM in the South Side Commons, um, Bring Your Own Lawn Chair. And then a thank you to Binghamton Fire Department, uh, Binghamton Police Department, Superior Ambulance Service, uh, NICE, Broom County Office of Emergency Services for your service on Park Ave slightly under a week ago. Um, so that's what I have. Thank you.
You, thank you so much, Councilmember Medavetzky. Councilmember Hotchkiss?
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
I'm just going to say for my communications that anybody who needs to reach me, please do it through the clerk's office. I had my car broken into, and my council phone, amongst other things, was stolen from me, and I'm going to be a little while before I can get one through IT and purchasing. So if anybody needs to contact me, please run it through the clerk's office at this time. Other than that, I have nothing else to communicate, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Motion and a second. All in favor for adjournment?
Aye.
Aye, meeting adjourned.